Welcome, everybody, to our, it's our third meeting like this, I think.
Third one.
Our third socially distancing meeting for the Village of Reinbeck. I'm happy to see that all of our board members are here tonight, so thank you. So with that, I'd like to lead off with a pledge allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, I'm gonna just remove this temporarily because it's easier to kind of talk. I want to read off, lead off with a statement. This is a joint statement prepared by myself and Officer in Charge Sergeant Pete Dunn about Village of Reinbeck Police and our policing policies. The recent death of George Floyd at the hands of members of the Minneapolis Police Department has had an impact on every community. People are understandably outraged about this and other instances across the country. We believe it is important to examine police use of force procedures in our communities. Our policies are reviewed regularly by the officer in charge and updated by the village board. No act of racism will be tolerated. And beyond words, we need to demonstrate that in our actions. We will continue to work at all times in cooperation with the community to promote understanding and confidence in our law enforcement. We work hard to be the best public servants that we can be. We believe the police and our Reinbeck residents must be partners with shared goals, mutual trust, and respect. The police force is part of this community in ways big and small. Transparency and ongoing communication are vital elements of this relationship. The use of deadly force, such as chokeholds and kneeling on someone's neck as a means of constraint is not in our policy or in our procedures. Our officers are trained to de-escalate and end the potential of a violent confrontation. Further, our officers shall use mutual respect to pursue understanding between themselves and our residents. Village of Reinbeck Police have serious responsibilities and are sworn to uphold the law, enforce village and town ordinances, New York State laws, maintain the peace, protect property, and protect the personal safety of our residents. The New York State Criminal Procedure Law Act 35 clearly states the regulations regarding the use of force. We encourage anyone with questions to reach out to one or both of us. Our doors are always open, and we are proud of all the officers of the Village of Reinbeck Police for their professionalism and their dedication to the job. And we want every single person in our community to live in confidence that the laws apply equally for everyone. With our deepest respect, myself, Mayor Gary Bassett, and Sergeant Pete Dunn, Officer in Charge, Village of Reinbeck PD. Thank you. Okay. Onto business. We have some important business to discuss tonight. And the first part of that important business is, today is Tuesday, June 9th. We are officially in Phase 2 for the New York State Guidelines. We've been planning for this for a long time. Actually, we've been planning for Phase 3 because Phase 2 had a different definition prior to a week ago when our governor announced changes to the outdoor dining for Phase 2. We know that our restaurants and our retail businesses have suffered dearly and have taken a huge impact on their income. And we, as the village board, are trying to do everything we possibly can to promote the growth and the comeback for these merchants. And we're gonna leave no stone unturned. Some actions may be good, some actions may be not so good, but we are gonna leave no stone unturned to try to bring back the vitality of the Village of Reinbeck and our merchants. Because they are the economic engine for all of us. For the past month, for the past two months, we had a small committee that consisted of Trustee Lewitt and our restaurateur Josh Kroner, representing the chamber and also the restaurant. But he not only represented them, he represented a much larger audience as well. And out of those plans for the last two months, we came up a plan for reopening of the Village of Reinbeck. We were planning on this for Phase 3, as I said before. Phase 3 was when we thought we were going to get into having some available dining. We knew it was gonna be limited at the time, but we knew that at Phase 3 we were gonna have some dining. Last week, the governor said outdoor dining is permitted. That fit in perfect with the plans and discussions that we have been working with, with our merchants in the village. And this does not include just Market Street, it includes all of our merchants that are in the village. Along with that, I've been working cooperatively with the rest of the municipalities in Dutchess County and our county executive, Marcus Molinaro. Marcus has been great. He's helped us a lot through this process by clearing roadblocks that would have been monstrous for us to get across to do anything. With that, our county executive has issued local emergency order number 12. I'm just gonna read part of this because it's really important. Whereas a state of emergency was hereby declared by the County of Dutchess effective on March 13th, 2020, emergency executive order number 2 of 2020 due to the case of COVID-19 being confirmed by the county. Whereas pursuant to the power vested in me as the county executive by Article 3 of the Dutchess County Administrative Code and pursuant to the provisions contained in the New York State Executive Law which authorizes the chief executive to promulgate local emergency orders upon finding that the public safety is imperiled by the event of a public emergency or in the event of reasonable apprehension of immediate danger thereof, protect life and property, and to bring an emergency situation under control. Now therefore, by the power vested in me as the chief executive, this is Marcus Molinaro of Dutchess County, is hereby ordered, Section 1, supporting reopening of food service and establishments. In Section 2, effective, there's a long list for that, but Marcus Molinaro, in Section 2, the county executive of Dutchess County in accordance with the declaration of state emergency issued on March 13th, New York State should hereby order that local emergency orders shall take effect on Tuesday, June 9th, 2020, 12:00 a.m. through June 13th, 2020, at 11:59 p.m. The duration, this order will shall remain in effect until removed by the order of the county executive and may also be reviewed in five-day increments. The reason this is important, because as mayors and supervisors for Dutchess County, all working together cooperatively have all come up with a very common theme. And that common theme throughout the county is to open our doors and open our restaurants, to extend retail and restaurants to capability of doing more outside. And with that, we supply through our zoning department and through our legal, a list of codes that are in our zoning books that we will be, that the county executive has suspended for us to allow us to expand outdoor dining without modifying our codes or going through the procedure. The county executive has also worked with the State of New York and the Department of Transportation to allow us to change traffic flow or close roads for state roads here in the Village of Reinbeck and in other municipalities. So with that, that sets the premise for what we have been working on is a long time since April towards Phase 3 to get into this, to get to this plan. But now it's Phase 2. So the conundrum here is, we thought we had more time to do this, so we've been rushing a lot in the last two weeks to get ready for this in preparation for what we hope will be a traction for the Village of Reinbeck to bring people back to our village, to have people sit in our restaurants and shop in our shops on a more regular basis in a safe way, right? So having that, I'm gonna turn over to Trustee Lewitt, who we worked together on drafting the plan. And then I would like to open it up for board discussion on any of the issues or concerns.
Okay, just gotta get set here. We're having a little audio problem, so it's just troubleshooting the audio problem while we were...
Are you okay? Are we okay?
Apparently, there's a bit of background noise, but I can't figure out where it's coming from. So it's gonna be, it's gonna have to stick around. So just give me a sec to get set here. So, okay, you can take it.
Well, you, sorry, you take your time. I'll just lead off with this because it goes in parallel to what I was saying. These are the Village of Reinbeck, and it's a temporary reopening plan for our restaurants and retail. And as I said, we were meant, we were trying to target a later time to do this, later in the month. Now it's June 9th, so some of the things are not ready yet. And we'll get into some of the details, but the first process of that is for the board to agree to this plan. And then if it's agreed to, we have already a half a dozen applications who have submitted requests to follow these guidelines and expand, and expand our operations.
Okay, I'm ready to go now. So as the mayor mentioned, this plan has been discussed with the chamber, with Josh Kroner, who has been communicating with our restaurants, and also with the group Reinbeck Responds. So there've been a series of Zoom phone calls, web phone calls, all kinds of stuff that we've done to try to solicit as much input as possible and iron out the details of what we'd like to do. And I'd like to talk about this in two separate phases. One is for the retailers, and the second is for the restaurants. So right now, this for the board as well, in village code, we allow retailers to set up merchandise in the area directly adjacent to their storefront, maybe about three feet to do it in, and there's a fair amount of restrictions. What we are proposing, now that they can once again start doing sales, is to basically lift the requirement, or lift the restriction on the amount of space they can use. They can basically go out and use their entire storefront three feet deep in order to display wares, do business, whatever. I'll say that all of these things that we're talking about are always contingent upon leaving a free and clear path along the sidewalk. The sidewalk, there's obviously a 36, 48-inch pathway that is basically inviolate. It always has to be open so that always can be steady traffic. So that's the first thing we can do. And as of today, any retailer in the village can start doing this. There's no permit required, there's no fee required. We don't even require an additional insured at this time. The next section of the plan is more ambitious, and this is again been discussed with many people. It basically calls for limiting the traffic flow on East Market Street from Route 9 to the western edge of the municipal parking lot. In short, the road would be narrowed down to one-way traffic going eastbound, that is, from Route 9 to out of town. And there will be a 10-foot space from the sidewalk into the street that would be open to restaurants and businesses so that they can either put out tables or put out wares during the, during business hours. The pedestrian area will be protected by some form of traffic barrier. We're still, we're still working that out. So this is to give our restaurateurs, who currently cannot serve indoors, a chance to put some tables outside and begin to serve people. They will also have the space, if they can negotiate it with their neighbors, directly adjacent to their façades as well. And again, there has to be a free and clear space for, to give our pedestrian traffic along the sidewalk. We are using our events permit application for the restaurant process. It has several provisions, the most important of which will be that, obviously, we want a site plan so that people can hand draw out whether tables are gonna be. We want to see that all of their plans meet with all the proper social distancing requirements. We'd like to see that they have a plan for the maintenance, the upkeep of the area. Obviously, if there're gonna be people, if there's gonna be garbage, it has to be kept clean, free and clean. The duration of this reduction on the section of East Market Street would terminate at one of two times. Either if we get to the point where the restaurants are able to open again and more fully functional and it's no longer necessary to have this arrangement, or if unfortunately, things last that long and the weather turns and people just have no desire to be outside, then we would once again open the street to two-way traffic. In the process of developing this plan, we were talking to restaurateurs, we've been talking to the retailers, we've also been talking to our police and fire departments. It's very important that we do this with the idea of public safety in mind. So we've worked on how wide the street needs to be so that the fire trucks have access, the spacing of the barriers such that people who are walking are protected. And so far, in general, we've had a pretty enthusiastic response. I can answer some questions, some frequent questions that come up is, why eastbound, why from Route 9 out of town? And the reason why is that we have a lot of traffic that piles up heading westbound as it is. And if that were to get any more crowded, that would probably be, probably be a lot, a lot worse. Other questions that people ask are, what about signage? We're looking into getting the electronic signs that are used for the Dutchess County Fair to alert people that there'll be new traffic patterns available. We will also have more local signage here, so when folks get to the intersection of Center Street and East Market Street, they will be directed, if they want to go north on Route 9, to make a right. If they want to make, go south on Route 9, they'll make a left. And the section of East Market Street between Center Street and the municipal parking lot will remain open. That's both for access for the fire trucks and so people can go and use, continue to use the municipal parking lot. So that's the basic plan in a nutshell. We are asking for the village to be an additional insured as people put up permits. And anything that they do will have to, if they're serving alcohol, has to be cleared with the state liquor authority. The state liquor authority is basically asking for the same information that we are, so it shouldn't, it shouldn't go out, it shouldn't make it too difficult for owners on them. And with that, if you guys have any questions?
So it's a couple points. It's eight feet out, not 10 feet.
Oh, excuse me.
It's eight feet out, not 10.
Sorry, okay.
Correction there. And if you own your space today, starting tomorrow, starting, you could set up in your space that is already out, permitted, outdoor dining space can happen right away. If this is only to those areas that are being extended beyond your current space.
Correct. So if you have outdoor space, it's available. If you are one of the restaurants that does not have crook side space on East Market Street, we do have provisions for the folks on West Market, on Garden, on Livingston. But if you have your own private set of parking spaces, you can use those as well, given, given a site permit and complying with all the state liquor authority requirements. The other thing that I would add is that in our plan, we are not obstructing any handicap spaces on East Market Street. All the, all of our standard handicap spaces remain in the municipal parking lot. And that any plan that would, on a private lot, that calls for the removal or the using of a handicap spot would require the creation of an equivalent number of spots with an equivalent set of access so that all handicapped, all handicap accessibility would be maintained.
So I'm a little skeptical that the county would have some kind of trumping authority over local zoning. And I would like to do things within the laws that we have control over. And I think we can accomplish all that stuff. My, my only hesitation is closing down streets and particularly state highway. I don't know where the DOT is opined on this, but we've, we spent months trying to get approval from the DOT just to do the waterline project on two different occasions. And I'm just not wild about narrowing Market to one lane. But I think we can accomplish the thing, the same thing by accommodating people to go elsewhere. And I can get to that, but, you know, my first question is, I'm very skeptical that the county would have zoning, trump zoning authority, you know, over, over, I don't see that mechanism in state law. I mean, zoning is very territorial typically. And it's, when you're within your, you know, the boundaries of your community, then you have zoning authority. I can think of one instance where the county planning has the ability to, we have to send, like, revisions to our local zoning code to them, you know, for their comment and approval, but...
We had to supply the county with a very specific set of codes that we...
No, I know that we sent them their codes. I just don't think...
No, our codes.
I don't think the county has the ability to just overrule, you know, our zoning. But that part doesn't matter, because what I look at this is almost like a big sidewalk sale or an event, you know, which is fine. We can expand that, we can have the three-foot lane or whatever on the sidewalks. I just don't want it encroaching the streets. So, I mean, I, I like the idea, I thought about this already, that we would need to do this, but I just don't like the idea of closing the streets.
Well, I think, well, remember that East Market remains one-way, and all of the access to all the parking lots will be maintained as well along the way. And I think the issue for the restaurants on, on East Market Street or somebody like Market is that they don't have anywhere else to go.
Well, we could put, we could actually give them the back half of the municipal lot or our lower municipal lot.
So, so, so this is...
We can direct people, and we've all seen correspondence lately about directing people up the hill toward the 20 parks at the library, toward the pool parking, toward the, toward the high school, much in the same way we do when we have, you know, events.
So this was, this was discussed with the restaurateurs specifically because there was an initial discussion, not saying, hey, can we lock off a set of municipal lot? We'll make it sort of a picnic area? And the two...
No, that, well, I, that's your word.
Quite what you're saying, right? You know, but having a remove, having a remove...
Absolutely not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is that they would have a section of our municipality or our municipal lot that they can have outdoor dining.
Okay, so the issue, so...
It's not a picnic area.
Okay, so the issues, the issues...
Let's not trivialize that.
I'm not, I'm not, no, I'm not trivializing it. But this is how, this is how it was developed. So the two issues are, one is the SLA wants a contiguous area for them to be able to serve. And two, what the restaurateurs told us, it's impractical to have their waitstaff go back and forth. They can't send somebody, a server out to come, take an order, then, you know, walk, you know, whatever the distance back. That that was just too, this wouldn't work in terms of being able to serve people and move people. We did, and this is not, this would not be an issue, but one of the things about having the, the restaurant locations right in front is that we know who's responsible for the space.
Yeah.
Right, right then and there. So this was, we, a variant, the picnic idea was kind of discussed, but the restaurants really didn't think it was workable to have the tables at a remove from their, from their, from a door.
And key to that is what you said about the SLA. It has to be a contiguous space.
What SLA?
The state liquor authority. If they're to serve in this area, it has to be contiguous space to their existing space.
We're talking about all sorts of examples. I mean, obviously, we, where's the DOT on the Market Street, I guess?
So one of the things we asked the county for is to work that deal with us with the DOT.
Well, I, yeah, okay.
And so they, they negotiated that. We sent a letter to the DOT.
They negotiated...
They gave us the authority to...
And you have the authority, you have the authorization from the DOT to do this?
I have the authorization from the county executive. I understand. I do not have it from the DOT, right? I have it from the county executive.
By the time we get that...
We don't need it. That's, the point is, the county, so Grant, you can take this up with the county executive.
It's a state highway.
The county executive...
I won't have to take it up with the county executive.
He's the one that negotiated, negotiated this one.
You can't trump the DOT.
He did. He did.
Can I just add that the executive order from the governor, which came out on June 6th, updating, of course, the opening of the restaurants, talks to the SLA contiguous public space. But it says contiguous public space, for example, sidewalks or closed streets. And that's along with Trustee Lewitt. I feel the same way. Guys, we all care about our small businesses. Some of us, myself included, are, is a small business. We're all feeling this. We want this to take place. But I had the same reservations that Grant does about the proximity of people and, and active lane of cars and vehicles.
So what we're looking at is using some sort of heavy barrier, jersey barrier, concrete barrier.
Then we have to shut it down.
Something that, something that, excuse me, Grant, something that...
Rick, I saw that, Rick.
You know, and that was something that we discussed with Sergeant Dunn. And he felt like, you know, as long as you have a good, heavy block there or something that's immobile. And the situation that they're looking to prevent is, you know, if somebody, it happens, somebody thinks they're stepping on the brake and they step on the accelerator and they get a sudden acceleration or something like that. So when we talked about it with Sergeant Dunn, his opinion was, yes, if you have these heavy traffic control devices here, then that is acceptable. It's safe, and yes.
Is that consistent with what the executive order is saying, which is a closed street? I'd rather see the street closed.
I know, absolutely. I can't see a B-store table, like, you know, 12 inches from where you can stick your elbow. I mean, you know, I'm a cyclist, actually, a lot of us are cyclists. You don't want that kind of tension when you're, you know, you're...
And I appreciate that you've been, so much work that the team...
No, no, yeah, absolutely.
But what I didn't hear was any discussion with any residents. Then we talked to our residents, and guys, we all saw the reaction with the, the garden and the suggestion that there would be a driveway up there. When we don't involve residents, that's what happens. So in this conversation, but, Rick, I'm sorry.
No, I'm, I'm thinking about things as you're talking.
No, no, you should be reacting, and it's fine. But we did have an issue with the suggestion from the...
Oh, yes.
Right, I mean, it's, we can put that aside, I think. Good, we could state publicly that that's not gonna happen. But my point is that when we don't engage our own residents into, hey, this is what your Market Street is gonna look like. And maybe you did have that conversation with some residents.
I've had it with many residents, in fact. And many residents, as a result of my emails, have contacted us and have been in support of doing this. Are we 100%? No, we will never be 100%. But the majority of the residences that have contacted us...
Can I ask how many that has been?
I didn't, no, I did not keep count.
Okay. What I would do...
I wasn't playing, but there's been so, there's been many that have contacted and said, this is a great idea, it's worth trying, it's worth seeing if we can make it a successful, it's worth trying to do something to bring this back. They like the idea of, you know, doing it partial. The issue with, I want to get back to closing the street. The issue with closing the street, we just debated a lot. And the issue is, you have CVS, where people have to get in and out to get their medicines, right, and maintain access for that to happen. We also have the Reinbeck Savings Bank for the parking lot. Now, there's other accesses that they can do, but they were referred to have their access. We have an alleyway that serves a lot of people behind buildings for parking that are employees or whatever that park behind the buildings down here. So we needed to maintain a way for those people. And we also have second floor and third floor residences that need to get to and from and use also that for the parking. We did, I liked your suggestion because actually, Grant, that was where we started, was how can we close the street, right?
No, that was not my suggestion. It was, actually, it's something he said, but I agreed with him. I think what he was pointing out...
From a point of view of safety and consistency with the SLA from the state, that's the terminology that's being used, closed streets.
So, but I don't want to close the streets personally. I don't know where John is.
We are, so just, Sergeant Dunn has agreed to this, he's reviewed it. Our fire company has agreed to it, right, as well as, as well as all of the restaurants, you know, to be able to do it. Closing the street, I don't think is a practical measure for us to do right now. We have to main sometimes...
I don't want to do either.
To be clear, I'm not suggesting that we close the street. What I said was that that would be safer than having traffic...
No doubt, no doubt. We could, it would be safer. But this with the barriers, either water filled or concrete or whatever, is also a safe remedy for separating people from cars.
I, I want to read what's in the document. The travel lane will be narrowed to the center of the road, allowing on-street dining areas and open areas to be set up. The dining open areas will be shielded from the travel lane by concrete, water, or metal barriers. I don't know how many of our residents have that picture in mind. And maybe it's okay, but I, I don't have a feel that the majority of residents are even acquainted with what I just read. That's why this only became public today.
That's why we're having a board...
Can't we pass a Plan B? Because this deal... Can't we pass a Plan B? Because this DOT thing's, all right. We've done, we've dealt with these, you know, I've done this before in business and stuff. And with here even, with the DOT approvals, can't we just do a Plan B for now?
What is Plan B?
Doing it without closing the road.
There's not enough space on sidewalks that will benefit our restaurants to be able to do it.
Can we do a Plan B in case?
There's not enough space.
The DOT.
So, why can't, why can't you accept Plan A?
Because I don't.
And, and agree that we've got.
The county can't trump the state. That's, that's what I'm saying. They may feel like they can.
I think.
I have specifically asked that question.
Okay.
I think, Grant, I think one of the things I've been on a couple of these calls and one of the things that's really clear, and I've, I've used to deal with the state, with the state-like authority, which is a notoriously difficult organization. And it seems like a lot of the state bureaucracy has gotten the message that there is.
Don't have approval out of the DOT.
Okay, I'm talking, please, excuse me, that there is a real state of emergency among businesses here within New York. And there has been an enormous amount of cooperation and people are trying to move fast such that they can make things happen. I'm looking at documents. One of the questions that you guys had, or one of the statements, is I, the first thing that I did, I started looking at this, is what are other people doing? What have they done down south? There's now a document from the city of Poughkeepsie who is doing, is very, actually, essentially the same thing. This is a plan and the mayor's supervisor's call. This is a plan that's actually being, this is very similar plans, are being executed by municipalities all over, all over the county.
This is getting too philosophical for me. The DOT, you aren't wholly, you aren't waiving an approval from the DOT, okay? That, I'm not going to make a plan based on the illusory presumption we're going to get that.
I can't.
Has Rich Olson seen this?
Yes, he has.
There's, this must be a typo. I can't believe that it would be correct. Or maybe it is. The village intends to require that everyone within the designated outdoor dining area must wear a face covering. Everyone. Does that include?
Unless you're eating.
Unless you're eating.
But it doesn't say that.
All right.
Obviously, you can't wear one if you're eating, but, right.
But my concern is when our turn misses little things like that, maybe missing a really.
This is not, this is, this is, this is a document for discussion. This is not, this is not the, this is not the final, this is a conceptual plan, not the, not the final, not the final document. The way that this really runs.
So, this is not something that you want to vote on tonight?
Yes, we do. We have restaurants that want to open up tomorrow.
How many of these applications, it's hard for me to see the depictions, will require the, the closing of the, of the street?
Ross. Let's try it again, actually.
Yeah. So, why don't we just approve them all and then?
La Pati and Abba's are the two that were, are moving out into the street, are the ones we've received so far, and the others. Oh, excuse me. Terrapin is Livingston Street, the right road, not a state road.
But it didn't look like they were on Terrapin. I mean, on Livingston. It looked like they were right next to.
They're four feet out.
Four feet in or four feet out?
Four feet out into the streets.
So, I just want to add, you know, an important point. I think it's important to keep in mind, this is a temporary measure. It is in response to an emergency situation. And I think, you know, as we are concerned about issues of the character of the village and preserving the economic base, we really have to think seriously about how we can work through the situation to implement this temporary measure. You know, I always hear the comments about preserving the character of the village. And here, we're in an emergency situation where we can provide some relief. I know it's not a perfect plan. And, you know, I'd like to trust in the word of the county executive and the written document that basically says we can do that. And if there's a problem, you know, it will be handled with their help. But more important than that is, if we have businesses that are struggling and cannot survive economically, then we seriously impact the character of the village on a permanent basis. The difference is that this solution is temporary. And it doesn't mean temporary with a fixed period. If it so happens to need revision, amendment, further input, refinement, however you want to describe it, we can do that. And I think we should really think of it in those terms, put ourselves in the shoes of the businesses, but also the folks in the community that want to get back to some semblance of normal.
Man, I think we all understand the premise. You know, we're trying to bend things for the businesses and, you know, I want to open up the sidewalks on this, during this crisis situation. I just don't think we have the authority to make, I want to do everything within our own ambit, you know, our own, our own laws. You know, I mean, would I consider Livingston thing? Perhaps, you know, but not, I'm, I'm just off the bus on the Market Street idea. And I, I don't, I don't, I'm not for that.
I'm struggling with the issue of safety. I have the greatest respect for Sergeant Dunn, for Chief Emmy and John Fenton, the absolutely experts. No question near judgment, but this still seems unsafe to me. Traffic and proximity to people. And I'm troubled by it.
For me, I'm offering an option, you know, like Red Hook from what I, I don't know. Red Hook, from what I understand, is, is, they're.
The only thing Red Hook has done is they've put in that tent, which is done by a private property owner, which is a place to take your takeout to go to and eat. That's what Red Hook has done. I've talked to one, I've talked to the mayor there, a lot.
Yeah.
Right? They wish they had what we had, their sidewalks and their streets online for us to go.
Again, they do. They have a Market Street too. What, what happens if we close out 199? We close, I can only presume we're going to close out 199 and then nobody can get to this, to Kingston from the, I mean, these are the things that the, the state DOT would be worried about. And I think they will be worried about it. I, I don't, are you going to get?
So, we're not ready.
How are you going to get from the Taconic to Kingston?
So, we're not ready for this yet. We can pass this, right, if you agree, because there's a couple of things that have to happen. Number one, as I mentioned before, we weren't anticipating this to happen so early. We were anticipating to have it early. So, there's certain barriers need to be procured. We do have access to all the barriers that we need for free to be able to use on our streets, right, to be able to make that work, right? So, they're accessible, but we don't have them. Nobody can expand out into the street until that is set up and arranged, because that is an unsafe situation. So, we get that space defined and set aside, right, to be able to make, to have that. So, until that,
Yeah, but we can't.
We'll get the DOT, we'll get the DOT approval.
I don't want to order hardware based on.
What?
Do you want to order hardware now? Before we get approvals or?
No, I'm not ordering anything.
Well, what do you mean? Where are the barriers going to come?
They're coming from a construction firm in Poughkeepsie that is willing to make, willing to let us choose them for as long as we want.
No, no cost?
No cost.
Even the transport.
I'm also concerned about the safety issue.
The document also states on the top of page three that on East and West Market Street, so West Market Street, Market Street, bagels, and selected areas of Barn Street, Livingston Street, Total Length, the restaurant, 50 feet, and they'll be permitted to extend from the curb by eight feet into the street. That's going to remain a two, two-lane.
Correct.
And we're going to let those restaurants.
That would extend, a restaurant.
Well, two, two. We're going to let them extend eight feet into a two-lane highway.
With, with proper protection barricades.
With barricades. So, we're going to, so then, we're going to ban the barricades, but it won't be narrowed to the.
It's going to narrow, it's going to narrow the street by about 10 feet. But that, that street used to have hidden parking on it. There's enough room to be able to narrow that street down and maintain two-way traffic. And again, if you're talking about access, one of the questions was access to the Rhine Cliff train station. So, you definitely want to have people be able to go both ways to get down Rhine Cliff Road to Rhine Cliff train station. You can easily go around this section of East Market Street if you're traveling westbound, but we have to allow people to get down to, to the.
Well, it's not that easy right now. We're still doing the waterline project.
Right. And, and I'm just going to really, I just really want to, I really want to push back on something, which is, like, first of all, our restaurateurs are telling us that, yes, they want to do it. And I think there'll be people out there. This is the document type you see here. They came down from the city of Poughkeepsie that they're, that they're using. And they're using as examples. And here are, like, there are many clear examples. There's exactly, I don't know if you guys can see exactly the situation where people are using water-filled traffic barriers to demarcate.
I'm sure that.
A dining, a dining area. There are other places where they're using all kinds of.
I'd be very surprised if any of those were state highways.
They're just using metal barriers, other places, what they call parklets, they're actually defined.
I understand.
Pretty, pretty gently. So, I'm not, I, my restaurateurs.
I'd be very surprised if any of those were state highways.
Are telling us that they think that people will come and dine.
So, you're answering a concern that I didn't have. I said, I'd be very surprised if any of those were state highways. Are any of those state highways?
Grant, I think we've come down, we've come down the question. Your concern is this closing a state highway.
And.
I'm thinking, I'm, okay, okay. Well, okay. I'm thinking that I've got the sign-off on the safety issues from my, from our sergeant and from other practice that I've seen. We're not doing anything that's, that's not in past practice. Your concerns about the.
There's a significant.
Your concerns, your concerns about the.
We would, we need to see the traffic count, right? That, that's a busy street. I don't know what your hypotheticals are, how sleepy they are. I've already said, perhaps we'd consider it for Livingston, because it's not nearly as busy as 308.
People are going to, again, we're going to put up signs. People are going to have to take some level of detour to get around. What you're going to find is people are going to set up, they're going, instead of coming through the village, they're going to go, if they're coming from the south, they're going to go out South Street. Or if they're coming from the north, they're going to go down Livingston Street. And it's going to cause a little more traffic congestion in the village. But again, this is the kind of thing that we have to do, though, to really try to give our restaurants and our merchants a chance to.
What I don't want to leave this discussion is, is that I didn't offer some, some ways for people to expand on the sidewalk. We have really, we have some big sidewalk.
The expansion on the sidewalk, our restaurants have said, is unacceptable.
Okay.
Okay? So, you're essentially telling them that the.
No, no, Gary, you're speaking for.
Well, I am, because they've, they've said it's not, they've said it's not acceptable.
This absolute is, communication is really troubling me.
If they're going to.
I said, what's wrong with my communication? I said, the restaurants said they can't, they cannot accommodate and maintain a three-foot passageway to do anything on a sidewalk.
Okay. Well, then I'll take the political heat. I'm off the bus.
The other streets like Livingston, because it's not clearly stated in the document, I'm not being critical, there's going to be barriers on Livingston Street, anywhere we're permitting our businesses to encroach eight feet into or, there's going to be barriers.
Mm-hmm. Yes, has to be.
Has to be.
That's an absolute must, Dave.
We can't, we won't allow it if we can't do it.
Well, I would hope not. I would hope not. But it's unclear in the statement, in the document. But now, the, the character of, of the village is being altered, may only be temporary, and maybe everyone's okay with it. I just don't have that comfort level. So, we, we would have liked to have had, I'm sure we all agree, a workshop with our residents so we could talk to them and hear their input on this. I understand that we haven't had the opportunity to do that. The clock is ticking, but.
So, I think the time is here and the time is now. Other, other municipalities are taking these steps and are moving forward. We are, if you want, in a competitive situation. We're attempting to create an open, sort of, you know, like sidewalks, an open street, a bit more of an open street so folks can come out, dine, relax. There can be some street furniture. There's additional room for our merchants to be able to merchandise. This is the kind of thing that we must try, because if we don't, they're going to die on the vine. And that's really simple. They, they either, you know, there's going to be, there's social distancing limiting inside the retail stores. There is no in-store dining. There is no in-store restaurant touring right now. If we don't do something to help them, they're going to wither away.
How many?
I've seen a, a, a study here that a third of the businesses for the last three months have seen a 90% drop in their income.
Honestly, what's.
So, what I'm, so what I'm saying, what I'm saying, John, is that, that we have to move something. We have to move forward.
What happened in this conversation is a suggestion that you've got the, the, the market cornered on concern. We're all concerned.
That's what my, that's what I'm concerned with.
We're equally concerned.
I'm heartbroken about the hospitality industry. My, my family income is based upon the hospitality industry. Let's not.
So, let's get off that. We all.
Can we?
We all agree.
Can we?
Yeah. I said, let's get off that. Let's all agree.
We started with trivializing the picnic option, okay?
I don't think that was intentional, Grant.
Yes, it was.
Grant, hey, Grant, it wasn't. It was because we looked at a similar option initially to say, what happens if we set up in the thing? I called it the picnic option, just because actually it was clearer to other people. But yes, we're talking about having a dedicated space. But the idea of looking at a, a space not contiguous, far away from the restaurant stores.
It doesn't have to be far away. There's all sorts of accommodations that can be made.
Hey, give me, show, come up with a plan that would work for the restaurants, that would work, that would allow that.
How many restaurants are affected? We have a bunch of them that don't even need this. You know, I mean, all right. By the time you get DOT approval, I'll be finished with my plan.
Why would we not try, why would we not try this?
Because.
Why would we just not, why would we not try it? Ask, answer that question.
Because it's going to be a cluster flip to shut down Market Street slash, it's a state highway.
And if it doesn't work, at least we tried. If it doesn't work, we pull the plug. Right?
I'm not doing it without DOT. Look, I'm out in the, you know, that's not fair to leave the merchants down a rosy path that you have state approvals when you don't have state approvals.
We, we're not ready. We don't have the barriers. So, between now and getting the barriers, we'll get you the DOT approval.
No, anything that I would approve would be subject to DOT approval.
So, let's, let's work on that. Work with us on it. Rather than throwing stones, work, work with us to do it.
Gary, I'm not throwing stones. This is, I hope you understand this is a difficult issue, you know, I mean.
I, I believe this is.
Okay, well, prove it then. This is complicated, okay? My, any vote that I would do would be subject to DOT approval, not, not something we're going to work on.
So, Grant, I said, work with me to get the DOT approval.
Subject to DOT approval. In other words, I'm not approving it. Nobody can take a B-store table out until they have DOT approval.
So, I said, work with me and we'll get, and to get it.
Are you, are you agreeing that that would be okay?
I'm going to work on, on proving to you that we have DOT approval.
Then the resolution would be subject to DOT approval.
So, that's what I said. Let's pass it, resolution of getting the DOT approval.
And I want to move now. I, I think we have, we've gotten, we've gotten advice mechanic, no, we've not a license mechanic executive. We've seen that various, 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 various agencies are really willing to cooperate. And if worse comes to worse and they come down and I say, look, we've got to pull this, then we'll pull it. But I really think that.
You won me over the last minute and then, but it's got to be subject to.
I have a different, I have a different, yeah, I have a different, different.
No, I understand.
I, I have three reservations. I absolutely concur with, with Grant. I respect Grant's opinion about this and his experience is more pronounced than any of us. So, I respect Grant and I believe that language is, is very important. Number two, I'm, I'm just going to continue to say that people sharing street space, even with the barriers, I'm, I'm still concerned about personal health and safety of, of.
But, you know.
I guess I just have a real, I have a real problem with us.
I said three, you let me do two.
I, I just have a real problem with the fact that we have the professionals in the room, which is the police.
Paul, perhaps you can give it to me for one.
Let me finish. It's fine to have an opinion, but we can't basically say, gee, we don't like this, even though our professionals say this, it's going to be fine. And I, I think that's really unfortunate. You know, we can't undermine the professionals that we rely on, that we've hired, that we've vetted out, that we trust in 99.
I think what's unfortunate is that you're being very selective about hearing what I'm saying. What I said before was I had the greatest respect for Sergeant Dunn, for Chief Emmy and for John Fenton.
No, you don't, because you're not basically taking his advice.
And despite that, I have reservations about safety. What's wrong with that? I, I'm not asking you guys to feel the same way. I'm concerned about the safety.
We're all concerned.
But I'm going to, at least I'm going to accept Sergeant Pete Dunn's advice and the building inspector's advice to say, it's considered safe.
And I'm still going to lose some sleep at night. That's the difference between the two of us, okay? The third item is, is resident input. I, I don't think we've had sufficient resident input. I don't say that any of those are, are showstoppers. I'm probably shaking your head, Adam, but I'm, I'm telling you, I'm telling our folks how I feel. I do think the idea of, if we could agree to do something that's contingent on DOT approval, because I think the mayor is correct, by the time the barriers are being audited and being shipped, there's enough probably business days to see if we can make that achievable or not.
I'll just add one comment. I think in, in, in the, in the event of an emergency like this, especially where it affects our businesses that we depend on for many reasons, not only, you know, the character of the village, but for our economic health, that in an emergency situation, we.
have to have some courage, okay? And fortitude to move forward quickly in the best of intentions and recognize that it is a temporary situation, okay? I'm, I'm just surprised, okay, with, and I share your concern and I understand your concern, but, you know, sometimes you just have to act, okay? And you have to act collectively and strongly with the caveat that if we made a mistake, we need to revise it. Certainly, I think Gary and I will be on board, hey, we gotta fix it, we saw it, it's not quite right.
Well, I respect your concern, but I'm, I'm perhaps a little bit more cautious than you are and I'm not gonna apologize for that.
I don't know why getting DOT approval would be contentious. To me, I don't understand.
Well, I think we've passed this. We said we're gonna work towards getting the DOT approval.
That's fine.
Right? So.
Before we put the tables out, yeah.
Yes, we're gonna get, we have to get the barriers and we have, and if you want DOT approval, we'll get the DOT approval.
I, I agree.
All right?
But as Brand said before.
But I would like to move forward on this so our restaurants have long lead items that they need to think about as well. We can't let them.
I don't wanna set them up for failure either.
We can't let them fail either way, one or, one or the other. They need to get moving on this, all right? And I, I'd like, we've had enough discussion, unless there's another subject that needs to be brought up in regard to this, I would like to move forward and make a, make a motion that we pass this approval of the DOT, get the DOT approval.
So my last comment is subject to tweaking the setbacks and everything, because I don't know if this eight foot twelve, I mean, I don't know if the road's 22 feet wide, you're going eight feet in, you're going eight feet in, then you, you're leaving yourself six and a half feet, I mean, subject to, you know, practical considerations.
The eight, the eight feet is a deliberate measurement from the curb out, because that's what they need for a table.
So do you have that, eight feet?
Market Street is 40 feet wide.
Forty feet wide.
Yeah.
So you have eight and eight, okay.
And they have a barrier.
They have a barrier and that's enough. And, and walking, and this has been walked with the fire chief and Sergeant Dunn. So we actually literally walked through the streets.
We actually.
Walked, walked out, measured with a measuring tape and looked at stuff.
Yeah, but also, I can't, yeah, I can't imagine they would do it any different.
Well, we did that. We invited them to come with us.
Radius with the truck, trucks and everything.
We did it, yeah, no, and, and there were quite spirited discussions about what's it, and making sure there's enough space that fire hydrants aren't blocked, and what's the turning radius for vehicles? And, you know, we really, we really did an onsite inspection with them. The other thing I would say is that through Chef Kroner and through a couple of other restaurateurs, those guys are desperate and they know that we are also working on a contingent basis. We're saying, look, we're trying to work. They're trying to work with us, we're trying to work with them. They understand, I mean, it's not like we're prominent, we're, you know, we've said to them along the way, look, this is what we're trying to do, this is what we have to do, we're trying to line all this stuff up. If we can do this, are you behind it? Yes, they are. So that they, they're, they're walking into this with their eyes open. We've had a lot of communication with them and with other store owners about what their needs are and how we're trying to respond. So I feel comfortable that, that in terms of the restaurants, they know, they understand what the score is.
All right, so we made a motion. I made a motion, we passed the guidelines that we've identified, and then we get the barriers and we get the DOT approval. Well, I have a second.
I'll second.
Is there any other discussion? I'd like to take a roll call vote on this. Paul.
Yay.
Rick.
Hi.
John.
Hi.
Brand.
Hi.
I vote aye. Okay. All right.
I just want us to be sensitive if it's really a mess that we can reverse.
If it doesn't work, Brand, we've got a whole lot. That's been on anything.
Okay.
I'd rather have said we tried and failed and I'm not tried at all. Okay?
Yep.
All right. So now let's get on to the applicants that have submitted so far. And a lot of people are waiting on this to be able to submit their applications as well. So the order may be screwed up because I'm gonna go on the order that I have, okay? So it may not be the order you have. First one is Abus Waffle. And I understand not all of you have had a chance to read these. I haven't had a chance to read them either, because a lot of them are coming in as we go. And I promised each one of the, each one of the people, merchants that put in, we would act expeditiously on approving them, which means we're not gonna wait till another month if they come in. We're going to by poll, review them, have them approved by our zoning officer, they come to us and we, and we're gonna move forward. We're fortunate to have six of them, I think, here this evening. So first one is Abus Waffle. They have the diagram. I will say that there's one condition I think that needs to be met on this one, and the condition that needs to be met is the tables that are in front of the park area or the garden area for CBS. I spoke to John Benton, our zoning enforcement officer. He approved it pending that, that approval is done for, for the garden area, okay? Is there any questions on waffle? All in favor of accepting waffle, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? Okay, thank you. Next one I have is Le Petit Pisto. If you look at their diagram, they will be expanding not only on Market Street, but on the, on the Montgomery Street corridor in front of other stores, which they have permission to do on both Market Street and on the Route 9 to add additional tables. There is one, there's one thing we didn't mention, I wanna mention it here, and it's not for this case at all, but at no time can any of the restaurateurs exceed their approved occupancy, right? So they can expand, but they can't expand greater than what they were already approved for, right?
And, and once they start to open inside, obviously that counts.
Yeah.
Sure.
So is there any questions about Le Petit? All in favor of approving Le Petit?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried. Next one. This one is in the courtyard. Pizzeria, Pizzeria Pasta is going to just, it's not involved the street, but they are expanding out into the courtyard, right? With their landlord's permission to be able to do this expansion. They do know that they, you know, this, they have to split within five days the SLA approval for this. So any questions about Pizzeria Pasta?
Yeah.
All in favor of approving Pizzeria Pasta, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried. Very good. Next one. Gigi Restaurant and Associates. I found this kind of hard to read.
Yeah.
But as I figure it out, it, it appears that it's going to be coming from the existing, crossing over in front, over towards, I said, going south.
Yeah.
Right? And is, is for their expansion.
And that's been approved by the neighbor?
It's, it's been approved by the landlord who owns all of that property.
Right.
Yeah.
Well, who goes, turn it to half here.
So all in favor of approving Gigi's temporary patio expansion? Opposed? Abstained? So carried. Thank you. Last one is Foster's Coach House.
You got, you got Terrapin too.
Terrapin, good guy.
Okay, Foster's. They already have an existing patio, which they can do today, nothing, no action required. They are expanding into the corner parking lot with the diagram of tables that they have set up here, which are all socially distantly spaced, and they have agreed to move their ADA parking spot to an alternate location in the other parking lot to keep ADA parking. And both, this will be covered with a tent. Correct?
Yes.
So.
We're done.
Any questions about Foster's? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So carried.
Thank you.
That is all of the applications that we have.
Now, we have, uh, Terapin.
Oh, Terrapin, where's Terrapin?
Do you have to submit a letter to the SLA?
So, yes, it says in the SLA agreements that you have five days.
So we need something to.
Yeah, so John, our, our zoning enforcement officer, is typing up an acceptance approval and he will get that out to everybody, okay?
Thanks, Charlie.
Right? I missed, I missed Terrapin?
Yeah.
If you're listening, I apologize for missing Terrapin. I don't seem to have it in my file.
Very good.
So. I've seen that. I've seen that, okay. So Terrapin, they're the ones that are expanding into, they have outdoor dining already, they're expanding into parking lot and four feet out onto Livingston Street.
Just four?
Yeah, if you see the diagram, the first part includes the apron.
The apron.
The other part is the forefoot on the other side.
Okay.
Okay? Which would require barriers to be able to do that.
Right.
Okay? Any questions about Terrapin? All in favor?
Aye.
All, any opposed? Abstained? So carried. Very good. That approves everybody that we have that has submitted, correct? Martina?
We have, um, the, the, um, the ice cream, the ice cream man?
Oh, that's the peddler's permit.
Yeah.
That's a.
Okay, you wanna do it now or?
Um, yeah, okay. Well, there.
I'm looking at it.
Peddler's permit. If you wanna go to that right now, since we're in the permit approving process. Do I have the copy? I don't think I have the copy yet. And other business?
It's done, it's the six other businesses, the business D. And this is, this is complete, if you need to be pending.
Now, this is, this is the same gentleman that we've approved before in the past, is our ice cream peddler that goes around the streets of Village and he would require, we require for him to do peddler's permit, we require to submit an application, identification, approval by our police before we can go forward. Any, any questions on the peddler's permit?
I mean, there's still, um, uh, this is the, the cover, but did he submit all of the rest of the stuff?
Yes. We just, because of the confidentiality of all the information.
Ah, okay, okay, oh, very good, okay.
Yes. So we, we have a complete file, just, just for the record, trustee Lewin said, do we have a complete file of all the additional information for the peddler's permit?
Yes.
That has been approved by our, and approved by our police department, correct?
And fire as well.
And fire as well. Okay?
Motion approved.
All right.
Make a motion to approve the peddler's permit?
There's, there's Terrapin. All right. I second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Abstained? So carried. Now, I get all the papers screwed up here. Excuse me, why I get reorganized?
Can I ask if you're willing to move Red or Up?
To move what?
The discussion on Red or Up.
Um, we're into that very, um, well, that's down, we're gonna get there very quickly, if you don't, if you don't mind, Victoria. We, we also have another guest here who is also, would have to be waiting to do the next section.
Oh.
If you want, you can do rock, paper, scissors or, um, yeah, I'm not gonna let your arm wrestle because it's not socially distantly approved, but.
That's fine.
Okay.
I'm, I'm.
Everybody, is everybody okay with that? All right. So let's get on to the next section. The environmental policy recommendation project intern, Vanessa Bertosi is here to talk about that project that's being approved by both Village and the town.
Yes, yeah, the town board just passed approval for that yesterday. So basically, the idea here is Bard has a Center for Environmental Policy and they have a program where they place their graduate students in intern, internships.
Scut and doll.
And it's, uh, it's a six-month internship and we have secured grant money to pay this intern, but we would like that money to be coming through the village and through the town, pasties. And we're hoping the starting date would be June 15th.
And complete in December, correct?
Yes, yeah. And so the deliverables would be to, for him to review the Braggex Town Plan from 2009. He's looking at it from an environmental change point of view, so he will review it and see if there are any gaps there and make recommendations for policies, whether they were proposed in the plan and never implemented, or whether these are new policies that are a good idea. And then he'll also be doing a literature review and researching other similar towns and villages and really just putting forward recommendations for how it can improve in this area. He would like to do a, a final presentation, which you all would be invited to attend.
And so this is in joint, with the Joint Environmental Committee. I just wanna make that clear, that this is a recommendation brought forward by the Joint Environmental Committee to reevaluate, to reevaluate this, and they've asked Vanessa to be kind of the coordinator slash administrator for the environmental committee and working on this project with the intern from Bard, correct?
Yes.
Any questions?
No, I, um, I, I, this is the contract of Vanessa, I'm sorry. We, I asked mayor and the other trustee, says the attorney seen this, yeah, you were really looking forward to us, the email that you sent to Rich, and Rich did have some concerns. And I know that you provided some guidance to, hey, let's make sure these concerns are integrated into the contract, but neither the copy, the original copy nor the one that's up in the cloud are reflecting any of Rich's changes.
Oh. Um, so I think you're referring to the, Rich was saying why, uh, Rich, Rich was saying, let's not give the first half at the, at June 15th, let's give the first half halfway through the project. And I think I did make that change. If you don't see it here, I talked to the intern and, and we're all in agreement with Rich's feedback. So the, the first payment, the first $5,000 would be halfway through the project. And then the final payment would be upon completion of the project.
So, I, I can read exactly what Rich was concerned about. I think a provision, my commentary is follows, I think a provision needs to be added about any person, in, any in-person meetings that will social distancing guidelines be observed. That, I don't see, I didn't see that language. I don't see proration of work, since the village is making an upfront payment of $5,000. I thought that's not basically before anything is done, what happens if the contract's terminated? Do we get the money back? Town has not yet put up its funds and apparently isn't obligated to contract end. Do they reimburse the village for the portion of its funds that were extended but with no benefit being received?
Yeah, so that, I did change the dates from, so the village payment would be, uh, at, at halfway through the project.
It's a little, okay, I think that what it says in, in the contract is, after receiving this grant money, the village will cut a $5,000 check to the intern in mid-September, which is, which is good. Then it goes, I'm saying, at the beginning of the project.
Oh, okay, that's, that's the date, yeah. I'll strike that.
So we should make those, those, you know, very mighty corrections. And I think we should respect Rich's suggestion that something be put in that social distancing protocol.
Yeah.
Right, you know, that's an easy.
That's, that's the intensity, so we have to.
The proration, I, I think the way this schedule kind of addresses it, the way it's broken out in the work plan and schedule, but Rich is probably trying to maybe calibrate it a little more specifically.
I mean, there's a comment in here, John, that says the presentation may be in person or via web conferencing, depending on the status of the COVID-19 pandemic.
Yeah, yeah.
Can I bring you up a specific clause? It's more integrated than others to mention as a meeting?
Because we don't know what it's going to be like in September. We don't know what it's going to be like in December. Right, so.
I'm not arguing, I'm just saying this is what our attorney said should be in there. And, and it's not.
I think it was implied, but if you want more specific wording, we can add.
I would say that we should respect what the attorney is suggesting, it's such a small thing.
Yeah, okay. All right. I'd like to make a motion, we approve the, oh, I'm sorry, Karen.
Um, is it, is, who's the grant, is it the private grantor?
Oh, yeah, it's from the New World Foundation. And is there a, two, is it a very specific number? Yeah, it's a total of $10,000. So because it's a joint environmental committee between the village and the town, we thought it was most appropriate to split that capsees, so $5,000.
Okay. And will it, um, will we be, will we have to send that person and be reimbursed by the grant, or will they just send us the bypass?
The way it was specified when we had this discussion with the grantor is that they would submit the funds to the village to pay, prior to.
First day.
Yes, yeah. Because I wanted, I didn't want to expend the funds either unless we had it in our, in our bank account.
On it, obviously.
Yes, yeah. Okay. Again, I'd like to go back and, sorry for that, Karen, I'd like to make a motion to we accept the agreement for the environmental policy recommendation project as presented this evening.
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? All right, very good.
Sorry to interrupt you, Vanessa.
All right, next on the subject, next is the environmental specialist role. You want to talk about it yourself, Vanessa?
So, um.
Can I add something first?
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I've asked Vanessa to take on this role, because I've been leading the environmental committee ever since we formed it over two years ago, and leading us through processes and agendas and minutes and coordinating all the activity. And I'll be honest with you, right now, in this last period, and I think for an extended period, I need help. And so we had an environmental committee and we invited Vanessa in, and the committee has asked, and the recommendation of the committee and myself, after I presented them, that we asked for help, that Vanessa take the lead on us, this new position, which would be an appointed position, is why we're bringing it here to the village. It is a volunteer position, it's not a paid position, and it is, it is a volunteer. Sorry, did I steal any of your words?
No, no, I, um, yeah, I, I'm doing this work for the village and I'm proud to do it and dedicated to it. And so it just felt really good to get it down on paper and have an understanding of everyone, what my role entails on a volunteer basis. So, looking forward to you and see if there are any questions.
My role is to state that you, you're already the Climate Smart Community Task Force leader, right? And was successfully marched us through getting bronze. We're still waiting for our plaque that was, happened right at the time of COVID, so our plaque is still coming. And with this effort, hopefully, part of this will lead us to getting silver. And that's the target, to get Kingston, by the way, the city of Kingston was just appointed, just received silver status, which I'm happy for the city of Kingston to have that, but we also want to achieve silver status. So having a more dedicated person to focus their energy and time, I thought would help us move it along that path in a much more efficient manner. So I'd like to make a motion that we appoint Vanessa Bertozzi as the environmental specialist for the village of Brinebeck. So I have a second.
Second.
Discussion. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? So carried. Congratulations. You're now our first, the very first environmental specialist for the village of Brinebeck.
Thanks.
That is.
Great. Could I go, could I go to the next?
Absolutely.
All right. So, um, you know, the Climate Smart Community Task Force, some of our plans for the spring were canceled, unfortunately. Our events around Earth Day, for example. So we were really looking for something that we could accomplish in socially distanced way that would be of benefit to the public, to the village. So actually, a resident, one of the businesses, the JSA Financial, they have a sustainability director. And she approached me and said, hey, did you notice the Big Belly solar compacters, all of the labels are completely worn off? So how, or how's a member of the public supposed to know what can be placed in a recycling bin, which one's trash? It's pretty confusing. So we went, we did an audit of all of the Big Belly solar trash compactors and recycling bins. And indeed, they're in rough shape in terms of the labels just being totally worn off. So we did some research to find state-of-the-art weatherproof labeling system that is much more user-friendly, visibly communicating what can be placed in items. And, um, and it only comes to $94. We did ask the Frost donation, by the way, if they would be able to grant us that money, because they originally paid us so many, but they said, no, you guys, the village governor can handle it. So here I am asking for about $94, so I put some shiny new labels on these, on these puppies.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
I'd like to make a motion that we, who does the check go to? Question, sorry, before I make a motion.
I mean, could I just buy them to be reimbursed?
Okay. I'd like to make a, a motion that we reimburse our environmental specialist, Vanessa Bertozzi, for the $94 to purchase labels to put on our Big Bellies to make them more user-friendly for everybody.
Second.
I have a second.
Yes, second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Staying? So carried, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Now, um, since we do have another invited guest, if you don't mind, I'd like to jump over the treasurer and police and jump right into building, planning, and zoning for that discussion. So I'm sure our guest would like to get home to her family. So Paul?
Sure. So, um, thank you, Brad, for agreeing to help with this. We had a couple of conversations, I think, about the importance of taking a good look, an informed look at our role as an involved agency in the SEQA process. SEQA, of course, stands for the State Environmental Quality Review Act. It's a formal process that's required whenever a project goes forward that could potentially impact not only the place that it's being positioned, but also immediately adjacent communities. And so, you know, in, in bringing this to everyone's attention, I think it's very important that we do a couple of things. One is really understand the SEQA process, but also then have the appropriate informed discussion about the impact of the Grasmere project on the village. We all understand that it is a project that's located in the town, not the village, but because the village is proximate, but also, in my opinion, because the village may bear a lot, if not a significant portion of the impact in many dimensions, that it's important to go forward with a more formal process. The process is actually formalized through the law, the SEQA law, S-E-Q-R-A. And so I'm asking the board to support a process whereby we would be better informed about what the process is, engage in a way that we formally respond for the requirements of the law. But in preparing response, I think this is the most important part, that we inform the community or have the community, give the community an opportunity to have its input, to understand what the findings of the study are, and to fully comprehend and embrace the action that we're taking, or plan to take.
So Paul, you mentioned getting the planning team involved and?
Yes. In fact, you know, we want to take advantage of, thank you for reminding me, we want to take advantage of the resources which we have. And primary resource, of course, is our planning board, but also John Fenton, our building inspector. On our planning board, we have obviously some very, very experienced and quality qualified individuals who are familiar with the process, certainly better than I am. And we'd certainly like to have them participate, invite them to participate. At the same time, I think we need to think about the sort of nitty-gritty of this. That is, do we wish to consider engaging, let's say, an outside consultant and how we would do that? That is, pay for it, engage, vet it out, so that we have an objective third-party point of view in not only laying out the technical details, but also making sure that the structure of the SEQA response conforms to the law as in a format that is complete and satisfactory from a state standpoint, and therefore preserves our standing when we comment as an involved agency.
Any questions about this? Concerns?
Does the council agree with you on that?
Well, sure, I mean, we, we, Brad has been at this for a very long time, and I want to make sure that you received my memo, trustee Cortack. I submitted a memo on the history of the project and where it stands. So back in 2013, Brad had reached out to the village about the change of the water and getting project approvals. At the time, the project underwent a full SEQA review. So, you know, those who gave it to the village, or those who were given the D O T, all the interested agencies had the opportunity to participate in that project. A D G E I S was prepared, the Generic Environmental Impact Statement. The town considered lots of impacts, including community bite impacts, and they ultimately approved the project. Brad here is here before you today for, to finalize the water plan that you agreed to many, many years ago. But also because right now, even though they've been approved for their 110 lodging units, they're reconfiguring it on the property itself. And so the impacts that are being considered are impacts from the reconfiguration of those 110 units, not necessarily the impact of 110 units, which have already been studied. So I suspect that any of your concerns have already been addressed by the town planning board. Have you had a chance to look through their documents?
No, and I think, you know, quite frankly, you know, I don't, I don't recall that there was any formal response from the village at that time.
In 2013?
Yes, as an involved agency.
Yeah, this is before our time, you know, maybe Grant made in here.
I was here, and I, I wasn't the water liaison, so I wouldn't remember.
I mean, I have an email here from Howie Trout saying excited about the project, let's have a meeting, and then, you know, Keith's copied, Brian's copied, Brad's copied, so.
So what I would need, though, is the formal SEQA response as an involved agency. And I think that's, that's, excuse me, I think it's very, excuse me, I think it's very important, okay, especially at this juncture, it's been a very long time.
John.
But, you know, we are an adjacent agency, and maybe we need further advice from our council or whoever we consult with. But it seems to me that it's a project of significant magnitude, significant import on many levels, and I haven't seen anything. Now, if you have that document, okay, please, you know, send it to our attention, because I'd like to go through it and, you know, understand whether or not, quite frankly, the rest of the community understands this as well. Because in my view, you know, there are many aspects of the project I'm sure are very good, but I want to make sure that the community understands all of the aspects of the, of the project and the impact on our, you know, the character of the village, on traffic, on a whole host of issues.
So, I mean, the planning board is the lead agency, and that is the planning board's responsibility as the agency, it helps all the caring, you know, lots of other meetings that have been going on since 2013. So, you know, send us your concerns, and I'm, I'm sure that the project sponsor will provide and comment and address whatever those concerns are that have not already been addressed. I just want to make it clear to you that the units that were even approved, and right now, all that's being reviewed are any impact.
I understand that.
Configuration of those units.
I understand. So we need to do a little bit of research, in my opinion, I'm sorry, whether or not the town gave the village the opportunity to do a SEQA review, whether or not it participated or declined.
Well, the town is going to be recirculating to the shortlist. Once they receive the updated package, they're sending the updated package out to all of the interested involved agencies to keep them apprised of what's going on.
Okay, but that's, that's not, excuse me.
Can I jump in a second?
Yeah, sure.
So, two things, I just want to make comment. Number one, based on our last discussion, we've asked the town and the town planning board to have us more involved in the process and their meetings, not as a receiver of just documents, but an actual participant in the meetings, which they've agreed to. And trustee Cortack and trustee Newaker are now participants in all of the discussions going forward. The issue was, it's a lack of communication. And I'm not pointing fingers at anyone or any particular group or organization or municipality, it's just that a lot of time has passed and there's several new players that really we need to understand and get a deeper involvement. That's why I've reached out to both Brad and DePaul and the town to be able to be a more active player in all of these discussions. So we think it's important.
And I think, I think the project sponsor, Reason, wants to make sure that, you know, it's going to be a good neighbor and a good project for everyone. We just want to make sure that you're commenting on the proposal that's actually before the planning board and not going back to square one, which is always been.
So I agree with you, but the square one part, I'd like to understand, okay, A, whether or not we were invited or given the opportunity to participate in the SEQA review as an involved agency, or whether or not we basically waived that at that time, because I think that's an important aspect of this. And so we understand also that it is evaluating this project, and I think if the mayor is saying is, well, we've been invited to evaluate this project and we'd like to elevate our position in the, in the comment process to an involved agency, okay?
Well, you are an involved agency. I mean, the, the project's getting water from the village, so.
Come on, let's not, let's not play that.
I'm, I'm, I'm agreeing with you.
I'm sorry. Involved agency is a formal process, okay? To say we're an involved agency because we're talking about a water project is a little bit misleading.
That's what gives me your involved agency status, I agree.
Okay. Completed the involved agency process, okay?
That process occurred back in 2013.
Okay, so that's all I'm asking for, is the documentation for that, so that we understand it.
The documentation is in at this point, you know, that should assail, let's move on, you're getting another circulation package in the next two weeks. We don't need to spend time knowing that was in there, and we can look at what we're getting in two weeks, and that's going.
So will that include the SEQA comments that the village filed, if there were some, or some documentation that basically says, no, we didn't want to comment in 2013, we had no interest in following through on that? That's the key thing, okay? And if there is a SEQA document, I'd like you to submit that, please.
So, and Martina, I'd like to ask, Martina, you can go back and search our records, and we can get the dates, so that we can also get correspondence on what happened in the village in 2013, please, made available, to be made available. I think, again, I'm talking about, we're talking about communication here and, and involvement. But we want to just be, make sure that there's, there was adequate communication, past and present and future, which is what we're setting up, and B, that the documentation, everything that we can, we're playing a role in. Now, making sure that we have a voice, because we don't know, and we're trying to get that documentation.
Quite I don't know what the implications is, since we've had communication with the town, and the town has basically said, hey, yes, you're an involved agency. The question is whether or not, you know, we have that right at a certain, at this new juncture, and what level of involvement in the SEQA process that we want. I think we should have that, you know, opportunity to understand whether or not we even have that option, okay? And so that's all I'm saying.
And I'm, again, I'm just saying, let's move forward together instead of spending time looking backwards, trying to figure out what happened in 2013 when you had different administration.
Well, Victoria, we need to, we need to look backwards a little bit to understand how we got to where we are. And I don't think that's difficult to do with documentation either that you have as the client, as a representative of the client, or we have on file, so that we need to elevate the new board to that same level of status that we had in 2013. Because now it's, it's now, it's not them.
Right, well, again, you guys have a right to provide comments, you're going to give us updated plans. We hope that your comments have already been addressed when we look at the plans, but if not, you know, we'd like to talk about.
Perfect. So mayor, I think we have to, I would suggest that we basically formalize the request to look through our documents and get the necessary information with background and request, you know, additional background information from other sources.
I just did. I've done, I already asked, I've asked the village clerk to search, to search our documents, so it's in record. I've asked the client, the representative of the client to also provide us any information from back then that represents the village's position on. That's what we're asking.
Right, okay.
Not just a letter that says, thank, thank you trustee Trout, you know, which I'm sure is great, but we, it's a little more.
Well, look, I mean, I wasn't involved at that time, so I'm going to have to go find records as well, so.
Okay, great, thank you. Same here. None of us were involved at that time either, so it's, we're all searching.
I was there, but that's a lot.
And I might add, you know, I think it's important to update for current conditions, quite frankly, I mean, it's been such a long time, seven years, and I, you know, I appreciate you've been working hard for a long time to get this thing done, but circumstances change, and I think we need to make sure that we're fully aware and, and looking at this from a modern, up-to-date set of eyes.
Victoria, were you, back then, were they talking about using wells and pumps?
No, from the beginning, their approval was with municipal water. The change that they last proposed was to include municipal sewage, but after that discussion, you know, that wasn't feasible.
Right.
So, the sewer would have been a significant change, but the, the water is the same.
Okay, so I, I think we're clear on our communication about moving forward, correct?
Well, what I'm hearing is that it's going to be a tool happen to search archive records from 2013, you know, my goodness, we have incredibly great records, but we should be able to locate those.
Yes.
I mean, would it also be helpful, we, we go before the planning board, but would you like a presentation yourselves on the project, an overview, would that be helpful?
I think, you know, at the, I thank you very much for that offer. I think we have to put it into context and I think we need to have, think through exactly what we would like. I would certainly like to see the presentation. I would like to also, in my view anyways, it's up to the board to decide, but I think it's, you know, important that the board fully understand the secret process. And I think it's important, quite frankly, that there's an opportunity for the public to hear not only what you have to say, but also understand the context of secret and the importance of participating in that process as an involved agency. So, it's really, you know, several pieces, and I, I appreciate the offer very much.
Right, and the, the public participation does occur at the planning board, generally, they, they're holding the hearings and doing.
Yeah, I think, you know, I think it may, we'll have to look into, in my mind, it's a two-step process, that is, you know, there's a formal response with secret involved agency. And, you know, before we actually write a response, if that's the opportunity, then we should hear from our community here, okay, explain to them why we're having the public hearing, in my view, and so forth, and, you know, have some back and forth and let them hear firsthand from your point of view as to, okay, this is the latest version of the project.
So, the workshop would be appropriate, right?
I'm sorry, yeah, workshop, I'm sorry, I had a loss, thanks, great.
Are you able to move some of your milestones in the event of, of this? I mean, are you?
Well.
It's like.
So, right now, as I said, the, the client can put shovels in the ground on the project currently, but they want to move some pieces around. And so, they're going through the planning board process. Once the planning board recirculates to you, there's a time period for you to respond, which is pretty short, it's 30 days. You'll have to get your comments in, and if, so you'll have to get moving on that. But, no, the board, the applicant really can't do anything until seeker's completed and the planning board approves the new set of plans and the water agreement is finalized. So, we're kind of in a holding pattern.
So, there was a debate about that, I couldn't pipe in, but I did bring a motion to the floor that we, something about, you know, approving the water payment substantially in accordance with the terms that we had in front of us.
Right, so that's been done.
Was that done, I really, I couldn't even hear the.
I know, I was with you on Facebook Live, that's why I'm here today. So, my understanding was that they approved a contingent on seeker being completed, they conceptually approved the terms.
Oh, okay.
So, we have to complete seeker. It's sort of a chicken in the egg situation.
Yeah, yeah.
That was your recommendation or attorney?
Well, the town, the town won't finish seeker without knowing that we have the water lined up, but you can't officially.
It is a chicken in the egg, yeah, yeah. You can't take seeker through with wells and pumps because you don't have water agreements or you.
Yeah, so, so that's where we stand. But yes, there are time constraints, the applicant is eager to move this forward and, you know, I think they can come and do a workshop here, but the public comment to keep things clean really should be with the planning board who's taking all the public comment, but.
We're not public.
No, no, no. The board, like I said, I think we should have a present, a workshop meeting, you guys can ask questions of the applicant.
So, we can call a workshop in two weeks, I mean, I think maybe Zoom might be a more appropriate format for that, because people can.
Yeah.
But I guess my concern is how do we prepare for that workshop?
Yeah, I don't know if we're prepared to have a workshop yet.
When we get, when we get the ongoing plans.
Right.
And then we ask, and then Victoria gives a pitch to, or.
I don't know. My point is, we can't, we can't set a date today.
No, we can't set a date.
No, that's fine. So, the plans are coming, they, they will be sent to you by the planning board after their next meeting.
Everybody clear?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. Paul, and that's the Northern Dutch Hospital.
Thank you very much.
Yeah, thank you, Victoria. I'm sorry, what's the, in Houston?
The hospital matter.
Okay, so, thank you, Mayor. So, on June 1st, 2020, we received, actually, the board over there, received a letter from Newmont Health from the president Denise George, and I'd like to read into the record. It's to Mayor Bassett and the board of trustees. It says, Dear Mayor Bassett and village trustees, I trust that this letter finds you all safe and well. Over the past year and a half, Northern Dutch Hospital and the village have discussed zoning amendments at the hospital property. These discussions were based on planning goals and expectations that preceded the COVID-19 pandemic. While the focus of the past three months has been a response to the immediate challenges of the virus, long-term challenges will continue to unfold. We anticipate many substantial changes in the healthcare delivery system as long-term responses to the virus continue to be developed. These changes may impact all aspects of physical plant location and design. In light of the above, we need to take time to assess the impact this new normal may have upon the hospital operations and facility designs. We therefore withdraw our request for changes in the present zoning and request discussions be terminated for the present. The hospital remains committed to work and collaborate with the village when there is a realistic planning horizon for development at the N D H campus. We thank you for your time and consideration, very truly yours, Denise George, president.
Any questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Next. Treasurer.
Hey.
I know we're jumping around.
It's okay. Okay, it's been a busy month, busy end of the year, the treasurer's report.
Do you want to get maybe closer to the microphone, Karen? I'm not sure. That was a low-volume mic and you have to be a little bit closer.
Okay, the treasurer's report is for the month ending May 31st. The general fund ended the month with $202,626.80. The water fund ended the month with $407,138.89. And the sewer fund ended the month with $509,872.51. Currently, in the water main project account, there's $2,460,717.45. We have been successful with applying to D E C and, or E F C fund for the funding and being reimbursed in a timely manner, even given everything that's going on. So, we are going into, into this busy, expensive phase of the project in good shape. The, our New York class accounts are yielding .49, which doesn't sound very good, but our regular savings account is .15. So, New York, our New York class is New York Cooperative Liquid Asset Security System. And in these difficult times, it is important to protect our funds and invest wisely, and we are doing both. So, we're in good shape. Vouchers presented for payment for both the end of the year, 531, and our June vouchers in the general fund total $110,177.87. In the water fund, $36,578.05. In the sewer fund, $11,342.98. We just paid interest on the bond, and the amount of $7,363.21. And the water main project monthly expenditures total $1,291,549.44. And we've paid out of escrow $13,266.60 by evaluating with the building department six escrow accounts that had been complete, so we returned those funds to them. An operating statement will be provided for the revenue and expenditures through June 9th, as well as the end of May 31st, which I will do that at the next meeting because we have to accrue half of Friday's payroll, which will be charged to last year. Billing and adjustments have been reviewed and signed off by the water and wastewater department liaisons and are presented for authorization.
Can I make a motion that we approve the water adjustments presented?
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
opposed, staying?
I'd like to make a motion that we accept the wastewater financials presented this evening. Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying?
Carried.
Okay, tax collection is underway and residents will have an option to pay into equal payments. And tax bills were sent out on June 1st. Budget amendments, I presented a long list of budget amendments, but they are to close the fiscal year 2019-20, so I asked the board for authorization for those.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the budget amendments presented by.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, staying?
So, carried.
And finally, fiscal year in 2019-20 has begun, and I'm working with the accountant and also starting on the New York State annual report.
I'd just like to make a comment that we now are in our new fiscal year, but that doesn't mean that we can open up the gate and everybody can start spending money from their department budgets, all right? I just want to be very clear, I think this year's going to be challenging year on a lot of levels. So far, we've seen confidence in our budget planning in terms of how we plan our budget and not counting on certain funds this year, which may or may not happen as we roll forward, particularly highway funds and our chip funds, which we're hoping to carry over into the following year. We have received a letter that we are getting the AIM funding, right? And we have confirmation from the county executive that we are getting our social security, social security, our sales tax, excuse me, sales tax money up to the committed rate that we've always observed.
What you have for sure?
That is, it's in contract, yes, absolutely. So, it's a contract that the county has with us to deliver, to deliver on that. So, those kind of, those issues, we're watching very closely, but we don't know what we're going to be hit with, and I'm asking all of the departments to use caution in purchasing of anything going forward for the foreseeable future, so that we make sure that if something does come up, that we are in a good fiscal position and have not spent money, you know, on something that, you know, otherwise would not have been useful at the time. So, any discussion or questions about going forward?
I'd just like to remind the liaisons to just keep track and remind your department heads to abide by the procurement policy, and if they need to get three quotes, to get three quotes, and if it's over $35,000, then we need to go to formal bid to work with me to prepare that.
I need to do this for the chemicals, because we just keep re-upping, every year with the same vendor, and, I mean, I recognize.
So, we could, what we can do is we can, we can do like an annual contract with, with that. I have some sample legislation for that, and we can, that way we can do it for what we estimate for a year's usage.
Yeah, okay.
I'd also like to caution all of the agents on the use of our engineering services. We put in a procedure for following, right, for, for asking engineering to work, there's the quick task list. Our zoning enforcement building planning, zoning John Fenton is the maintainer of the task list that must be in his list prior to asking engineering to do any work. So, going, going forward, direct calls cannot be to engineering requesting work without making sure that it's on the task list and approved, because if it goes from task to project, then it has to also, the task doesn't require a board approval, it just means that we need to maintain a tab of what we're doing, but if it goes from task to a much bigger project, which is defined, it has to come into here and, and be approved by the board, okay? So, I know there's a lot of, each one of you have tasks that are now on the plate of our engineering department that have not gone through that process, so I would like you to review that list with John Fenton and make sure that it is all approved, if there's one more, okay?
And I just have one more, one more point. So, if you are, I know you were talking about this project for Grassmere, but this applies to any, any escrow or any project coming up that, that to be aware, if we are using a third-party consultant in any capacity, that's not going to be funded by the escrow that the board needs to kind of discuss where they're going to, where they're going to fund that.
I think that's, I think, Brian, if you brought that up, whether or not, you know, we can use the escrow funds for that, if I remember correctly, but anyway, we should certainly look into that. I think that it's normal for the applicant, in this case, to actually fund this sort of secret study. I'm not sure, but I think we should at least look into that.
Yeah, I didn't want to incur any additional.
Right, and I think that there, there just has been some question as to what, what is escrow, what is it?
We should confirm before we authorize, before we agree.
Exactly, yep, thank you.
I just want to make sure everybody does a little bit of proof. There's some things we got to do, we need to move forward, and some things we're going to have to move on quickly in, at any time, but just caution your department heads to think about what we, we make the miniature, all right? Thank you, Karen. All right, moving to police report, we have a police report for the month, for the month of May, total number of tickets in the town was 30, total number of incidents in the village was 78, total number of tickets in the town were eight, total number of tickets in the village 29, total arrests one, total number of accidents was three. We do not have a court report, because court is not open. I believe they will be opening soon, but as yet, our district park court is not open. All right. Highway Department.
The highway department has no formal report. I do know that the guys have been out picking up brush and leaves, and I would like to remind people that now that we are after Memorial Day, we are back on our ultimate side, street cleaning or brush pickup schedules, and if you refer to the village's homepage website, you will see the schedules for leaf and brush pickup on the north side versus the south side of the streets.
Water Department.
Don't forget the most exciting report, budget planning and so on. But you can go first.
Oh, okay, okay.
It's okay.
No, I forgot. Go ahead.
All water mains have been done with the water project. The 12-inch main on route, under Route 9 has been approved, or to help approve, and they're doing laterals now, which is the service connections. So, they're plugging away, that's kind of time-consuming. Last time I checked, they were able to actually bore under, which is nice, because they don't have to do these lateral trenches, which just means more paving at the end. Not much going on, they've been locating the valves and exercising the valves, locating all the water lines for the, for the water line project. I have before you guys a, the landscaping plan for the water tank. And it's basically three different areas of, of foliage, what is it, called bury sometimes, just foliage and stuff. Basically, it's just, she proposed that we do the birch trees. I had a question about that, because I know the. I had a question about that because I know the birch trees get under stress from the heat. And she might substitute that. She, she thought maybe I hit a point there. So basically, you got the Heritage River birch flanked by the, by the, the winter green and then the shorter stuff is sort of more in front. You have three different areas of screening, both for the old open reservoir and then the water tank reservoir. And then it looks like a really good plan to me. So I mean, I hope you guys like it. But Martina, did you put this together, the one where it showed all the different types of foliage that we're using?
It should be posted in the cloud.
Did I put forward that to you?
Yes.
Okay, because I didn't see it till today. I didn't realize that was.
When I read it, it was forwarded to me.
Because I was looking these up individually, but, so you have like the specifications of all the different types. There's a lot of native plants, so it's going to be good for pollinators and songbirds and things like that, so.
I think it's great that you're thinking about the birch. I've had experience with real birch that are.
They don't, they get stressed out. As soon as they get big, they seem to get stressed out from the heat and then they suffer. So.
Can we get a question? Martina, do we get a question from our residents up there? Someone came across my desk, one of the residents had a question about the side.
I think the neighbor to the, the south was wondering if we would do more on the south, but Barbara would thought that the southern screening was just, I mean, that whole fence lines has got stuff there to block the view. And then to the east, which to me is done very well because we have three different, you know, screening growth areas. So I think that's very well covered, it's actually going to be quite attractive. One of the things about the reservoir according to Barbara is it's considered a dam. And she thought that it would probably be considered legally a dam and that you can't, we're really not supposed to have decent-sized trees there because it undermines the quality of the tank itself. And so we went with the smaller trees. But that will definitely cover that, you know, I don't know how much protrude is from the tank, but.
But you saw the question from the resident up there.
I did, and I think.
Can you reply? Did you, can you reply?
I can reply. I will.
Thank you.
This is getting kind of pricey too. And I, I looked at some of the prices of these things and they're not cheap.
So what is the next step? Do we have to approve the plant now or this is? I would approve, it was great to see it, but I don't know.
And then I think what I should do is go out and get three bids.
Okay.
Well, the next step would be to get landscape architect that actually can put these things in the ground. And Barbara will, part of her contractors, oversee the plantings and see that it's not a problem.
So you're going to get bids next?
Yeah.
Unless anybody has questions about the screening? Okay.
Yeah. But I just want you guys to approve the plan.
Do you want to vote on it or do you want?
Yeah, resolution.
Make a motion?
I make a motion that we approve the plan that the birch substitutes.
Seconded.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So Carrie.
Thank you.
Wastewater. Was there wastewater report?
There is, Mr. Mayor. So they don't go into the cloud, the monthly report from Kevin McCombs, they have the monthly numbers, it's large, removal. The only thing I'm against is that Dave Matthews came out and did a good job replacing those blades on one, in one of the small retaining passes. It was empty, he took advantage and did, which overdid the make-up and probably what we're about.
And now I want to remind all the departments, that was done with department reports. Friday noon is the deadline to get your reports in. All right, we have the agreement and if you're not in by Friday noon, they don't make the meeting, okay? It's not fair to the rest of us that have to read them, it's not fair to the rest of us to understand them, and it's not fair to our village clerk who is constantly waiting for a report to come in and has to hound everybody to get it. So I would appreciate cooperation and we fast forward to have all the reports in by Friday, noon on Friday before the Tuesday meeting. I think that's.
Gary, I'd like to add to that, the vouchers and invoices, I mean, they were still coming in today and this afternoon and.
I know, I know.
It was really rough on Chrissy.
I'm sorry.
There would be an email like this morning and I think we need to, it's hard for us to make a deadline to say, hey, we're not going to pay anything unless it's in on Friday afternoon. But I think that the department should definitely try because if our meeting is a second week, those invoices to the end of that month can be, that's plenty of time for the Friday before the meeting to have them to us too. So this, this was a really difficult month, given that we had May bills and June bills and they were just still rolling in this afternoon.
I could not agree more. I mean, this, everybody here in the village staff works diligently and hard to get ready for this meeting. And having things coming in late at the last minute is just a total disruption for us to plan and be ready for this meeting, okay? So a lot of cooperation going forward would be definitely appreciated, both in the reports and in getting vouchers in to be signed by you. We have one committee report tonight, Climate Smart Committee.
Yeah. So some of, some of the items we already went over. I do have an update about the Cappy Greenhouse gas emissions inventory project. They actually postponed that next meeting until September. So that, that's been pushed off a little bit. And then the climate resiliency planning tool project is moving forward. She's got a couple of questions still to have answered with John Fenton, but looking to do a meeting later in June. And then just heads up that she would like to present to the board in August or September. So that's, it seems to be a long while.
Hopefully.
Yes. Yep, and then we have our monthly meeting online tomorrow. So that's it.
Thank you. I apologize to Detective Coachak. I again forgot about building planning.
I'm trying to do my best.
I know. I want to say the best. I'm trying to say the best of last.
So the planning, zoning building monthly report for May 2020, there were two actions resulting in issuance of certificates of occupancy and municipal searches, six building permits. The planning board had fees and approvals totaling a hundred and seventy-five dollars for a grand total for the month of May 2020 of three thousand, twenty-two dollars and seventy cents.
Thank you. My apologies for. All right, so back to committee reports, I believe there's a missing report. I haven't got permission from the board.
I am fully guilty to being late with the report. From the, yeah, sorry, from the, from the tree committee. So I hope you guys will allow to make a quick motion. We received a request from.
Is everybody in favor of receiving the tree report even though it is late? Public, public.
A public chamber. A public chamber. The Lutheran Church on Livingston Street requested permission to remove a maple tree which is keeping the sidewalk and is under some wires and is not in good shape. Members of the tree commission went out, took a look, they agree that the tree should be removed. There's actually another tree that's coming in behind it that was planted recently, I believe, it's filling in. So I'd like the board to approve the tree commission's recommendation that that tree be removed.
All right. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? I would also like to just let you know that there was an incident just this last Sunday with another tree, two down from that on the same property, where a major limb fell.
Okay.
And upon investigation of that tree, it was found to be rotten on the inside. And our, what is Meg, what would you call her? Meg is.
Okay.
Our tree specialist.
Yes.
Arborist, arborist, that's the term. That tree is also needs to come down. And I believe that the property owners, which is the church's side, would like to do them both at the same time. So this is a lead add to that.
Okay, I've not, I've not seen from the other members of the tree commission, but generally when there's a rotten tree like that, then we'll go with expedition.
It's a safety hazard, the falling. So just the board to be aware, just.
Yeah, I haven't seen that one.
I'm just, you know, what may beware is the utility company called me for whatever reason to, that they got a total report to remove limbs from this tree and they don't want to do it without our authorization. So I obviously authorized them to do it because it was falling on wires.
So I, I just want to point out that, so this year we were not able to do our spring tree planting because of the COVID, COVID requirements. And the, the commission is looking to potentially having family units or group of people that are, can be unmasked together to work as teams, potentially start installing trees or replanting trees this fall. So there'll be some more information about that as it comes along. But the commission is very serious and has been replanting trees at a terrific rate, twenty to thirty thousand trees every year. And we're trying to figure out how to work within the COVID recommendations so we can keep creating the village. Thank you.
Okay. I'd like to move on to other business. Part of the other business includes the Reinbeck High School graduation and Reinbeck Elementary School graduation. There are specific guidelines in the state for these graduations. The information is going to put out on the file, I'm not going to go into each one independently and I hope you have time to read them. But one of the requirements of the county is that the school gets our approval as the municipality approval for the graduation plans. So the principal of both schools have reached out to us, submitted us their plans. The Reinbeck High School graduation plan is going to be held at the Douglas County Fairgrounds, all right? It is going to be changing a little bit and I think as the plan has been updated, we're now, the governor announced on Sunday, they, you can have a hundred and fifty people in a graduation. The spread remaining class is eighty-one. So instead of all of them being in cars, the graduating class is going to be socially distanced in the grandstand for the commencement period and, which is the only change, right, that I know as of Sunday. The elementary school graduation, again, is at the Chancellor of Liberty's elementary school and it is a drive-through for them. I do not remember the size of the class, I forget on the note, but you have it in front of you. I would like to make a motion that we accept the plans submitted by the Reinbeck Center School District for the Reinbeck High School graduation and the Reinbeck Elementary School graduations.
Seconded.
Any other discussion?
So I will not recuse myself even though my son is going to.
I hope it meets your son's satisfaction.
Yeah, well, now that they can sit, they can actually get out of the car.
Yeah.
It's awesome.
Yeah.
I don't think he knows that.
As of Sunday.
Yeah.
As of Sunday, all right? So things are evolving and the school is trying to evolve quickly to support our grads that are in 2020. I really commend them all for a very, as I mentioned before, having a very, very tough year and anything we can do to help this process, I would like to be able to do. So with that, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstained? So Carrie. Very good. Thank you. The last, the next thing on the other business. Last month, I presented our opening plans, our actually, our policy and process for, for village hall. Very in-depth. I have submitted that plan to the county. The county has approved it. They did make one recommendation. We had the, we had the birch of gloves and gowns in, in the document and, because we copied it straight from the CDC guidelines. We don't have gowns. The county recommended that we remove the gowns and only use protective measures, which is the PPE. But they were very satisfied with our plans. They thought we had done a very good job of planning for reopening the village hall, all right? So along with that, I just want to mention that the county has asked us to go, as of today, to open up for in-person appointment only, which means doors are still locked, but people, a person can come in, make an appointment and have a meeting here using socially distancing, you know? And we're set up very well for that, either through the doors or forever. We're asking anybody who wants to do that to also make use of the telephone or Zoom or GoTo or whatever means. And if they can't do it without that and they do require a meeting, I'm asking the board's approval to open up village hall for in-person meetings only at this time, given our.
So please with the caveat that there would be a first attempt to do these other things, I think.
I'm sorry, I didn't understand, I'm sorry, with the caveat.
That you would basically include in that request or approval that the first step is to ask the applicant to basically do these other things as a precursor, right? It's a two-step process.
Like verbal opinion.
Yeah, yeah, very good, thank you. Before I do that, I'd like to back up because when we presented this last month, there was a request by the board. Because one of the requirements of the plan by the county and that we implemented was we need to do contact risk. That is a requirement of anybody that comes in the village hall. So we need to control that access in the village hall. And I believe it was Detective Coachak made the recommendation, and we were talking about how we control access. It's difficult if somebody's out there shaking the door, right? Which happens quite often, even today, correct? So there's no means that people don't know and we have signs posted, but that's okay. But we need to control that access and make sure when somebody comes in, they, if you all saw, if anybody, I hope saw coming in, we have a station set up with sanitizer, sanitizing fluid, we have gloves, all right? And we have a, we have a list that must be filed. With that, it's difficult for Martina or Karen or Chrissy or whoever's here to get up. And the recommendation was that we install a mechanical operated door that would, we could talk to somebody and ask them to name an appointment, instruct them on what to do if they don't have an appointment. And if they are approved, hit the buzzer, let them in, right? So that was a recommendation coming forward last night. So John Raimondo has contacted three vendors. This is possible to do, which we weren't sure at the time, but he contacted three vendors. One was Safeco, the other one was Liberty Security, the other one was called the camera guy. So we have, we were able to get two bids. We, after consistent calls, even by myself to Safeco, we don't have a call, we don't have a response from Safeco, but we did reach out to them. And the first bid I received from Liberty Security is a total of two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars to implement the mechanical door opening and the visual apparatus. And what's important is this remote can be transferred. It doesn't have to always reside on a particular desk. It can go to any desk and anybody can activate it. Am I correct in saying that, Martina? Anybody can use this down there who has here. We could do it from up here, as for instance, right? So that's two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars. The second, very same, came from the key guy and that was three thousand, eight hundred and seventy-three dollars and ninety-one cents. Liberty Security said that this could be installed by June fifteenth, which is the next phase for us to be able to consider opening up additional leverage in the billing, but we still need to maintain all of those controls and regulations going forward for our protection and for those people coming forward. So I would like to make a motion that we accept the Liberty Security bid of two thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars to install the remote access and visual for our door. And if it's sometimes, we don't need it, we can deactivate it, but if it comes back in the fall or late summer or wherever and we're forced back into a situation, we're now ready. And we have done everything that we possibly can do to protect our, our workers here, which is most important and people coming down. Okay?
Is that the motion?
Yes, I made it, I made it. Any other discussion?
Just to, oh, sorry, go ahead. Is there, is there a link for people at the door to speak to the people inside?
Yes, there'll be a button.
Okay.
And it'll be, it'd be video and audio. So when they push the button, whoever has the module says hello, how are you?
Okay, and there's only one module that?
No, there's one module, but it's, it's like a, it's like your phone, you can pass it around. So if Martina's not at the desk, it can go to Chrissy, it can go to Karen, it can go to John, it can go to Ryan, right? To be able to manage this, so it's not a fixed device.
So it has a, has a range that is acceptable for the whole of.
Correct, okay.
And is there any, you know, maintenance fee or anything associated with that? It's just a one-time installation?
It's a one-time installation. There is no maintenance request and there was no maintenance included into the bids. It didn't have. Well, good question, but I don't know the answer. We have to do it. All right? Have a motion, have a second, right? Any other discussion? All in favor? We've done a great job. So, will you make sure that that gets executed right away, so we can get that stuff?
I'm not going to change my vote, it's just a question, so the, the visual aspect is part of the remote.
I'm going to have to refer to Martina. The question was the visual part, is it on the same device? You get a module, right? And that module.
It's similar to, I guess, a cell phone, where the visual, whoever owns that device would be able to see outside.
Okay. I just want to make sure.
Thank you.
That's good.
Sorry. All right, I thank John Ramondo for doing the research to get this to happen. It was very fortunate that we could make it work with the door that we have, right? All right, I think, moving forward, I'd like to make a motion to approve the minutes for four fourteen and five twelve. Any discussion?
I got a couple of items, I can't work too much in here.
Okay. All in favor? Aye, aye. Opposed? Abstained? So, Karen, very good. I'd like to now announce our personal employees' June anniversary dates. June is a popular month. We have Tom Johnson of the Highway Department, Trustee Wood, who has nineteen years with the village of Reinbeck. Officer Brian Reeve, nineteen years. Anthony, five?
Two.
Nineteen years. Congratulations. John Fenton, five years. And sitting with us this evening, our treasure, Karen Gavlin, five years. All right, very important. Thank you. Thank you, everybody. We appreciate everybody that participates in the village staff and their dedication to the village. With that, I'd like to make a motion to go into executive session to discuss employee sixteen requests for extended time off. This is typically not an executive session item, but due to some personal circumstances regarding around this event, I am requesting to go into executive session. All in favor? Aye, aye. Opposed? Abstained?